Moving on to adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Move to approve.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. And it looks like we have a presentation. Do we still have one?
No, we do not have a presentation.
We do not, alright. Moving on to the public hearing. A public hearing on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower in a light industrial district located at 1111 South Mitchell Street, Apartment B, in the city of Warrensburg. Barb?
Mayor and City Council, this is a request for a telecommunications tower. There are some specific federal regulations regarding consideration of these by municipalities, and that requires us to have a recorder here to create a record of this hearing and then of your vote on the ordinance itself. So, I would ask that, and she would ask, that you speak one at a time while we're discussing so that she can record everyone's comments appropriately. I'm gonna enter a few items as exhibits and then give my regular staff report. So, the first is Exhibit 1, which is a copy of the staff report that you have in your packet. Exhibit 2 is the two-scale version of two pages in the packet, which is the topographical survey sheets 1 and 2, and then a copy of the page from the Daily Star Journal showing the hearing ran in the newspaper, giving 15 days' notice of the hearing to see more.
The council has received these documents.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a request at 1111 South Mitchell Street. That property has previously been divided into two tracts of land. One is the house, and the other is the property there behind it. This is the property where J.C. Myers Construction has their construction business and their equipment. It is a piece of land that's LI, Light Industrial, and that zoning district has an 80-foot overall height requirement. This is a request to build a telecommunications tower, which is use 19.200. The tower that they're requesting is a monopole tower to 150 feet in height, so it would exceed that 80-foot zoning requirement. They have, you have there in your packet a copy of a preliminary site plan. When Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their meeting last week, they recommended approval with the condition that staff approved the, be granted the authority to approve the final site plan that was included in the ordinance that's for your consideration this evening. We did receive one public comment last week at the Planning Commission. That was from Deek Alkar, and he questioned how the site would be accessed, if there would be a driveway from Mitchell Street, and so that was explained to him that it would come off the end of Alkar Drive into the south side of the property. Staff would recommend approval of the ordinance. The reasons are outlined in the staff report, and I would state them here for the record. One, the proposal is in keeping with the intent of the Light Industrial District and the general trend of development in that area, which is commercial and industrial. The property is located on South Mitchell Street, which is the Collector Street, which is a street classification designed to accommodate traffic that may result from a more intensive development. The location of the tower is adjacent to General Business District. It should not be negatively impacted by more intensive development of the site and additional traffic, and the tower would be located on the same lot and is adjacent to an existing leased site with another tower upon it. Be happy to answer any questions. There is a member from Excel here, and they are representing the applicants. If you have any questions.
So, this is just a straight pole going up, antenna on the top?
Yes. There could be multiple antenna arrays by the end of the life of the tower.
The function of the tower, what specific gap is that intended to fill?
Can I start forward?
Yes, if you could introduce yourself by name.
My name's Jim Janowick, and I'm a partner in Excel Towers. And so, the intent here is to help the, and improve the voice and data coverage in the region here, and 150-foot gives that height and capacity and coverage. And then, in addition to that, I'm sorry, could you state your question again?
Oh, I was asking, I'm sorry.
The function of it.
Yeah, I was asking what the function of the tower, what gap are we looking to fill?
It's for Verizon, the start of it. 1900 is what was stated in the application, and so that, there's no coverage, and so, for voice and data. And as everybody knows, everybody's on their devices before the meeting and getting here and everything else, so, I mean, it's just, it's a fact of life now, so, that's what we're looking to do. And we're building the tower in such a way where additional carriers can go on it to, in the future, to add coverage as their need is required.
Okay.
Okay?
You don't see any overlap or any, with any nodes that might appear on the tower that would cause any interference anywhere?
No. We, in our agreement, we can't, we can't put something up there that would interfere.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
And then, just for my own personal, maybe in the public too, is the land where you picked it, how did you pick that place to put this tower?
So, Verizon's our client to start with. They give us what's known as a search ring, and that search ring has a tight radius. And so, what we go and we try to fit into the community in the locations where it's not gonna disrupt residential or, you know, the Light Industrial is really the reason we picked that location, given what Verizon gave us to look for.
So, then you approached the Myers', they own the land, and asked them to?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is your company the current owner of the other tower?
I know.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, we'll close this public hearing. Move on to item number 7-2. A public hearing on an ordinance establishing an R2 1 &amp; 2 family residence district to, for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, located at 91 Northwest 10 Road and the 800 block of West Gay Street on the north side of West Gay. Barb?
Remember, at your meeting in May, you held a hearing to consider annexation of this same property. This is the property out on West Gay, right before the duplexes towards the entrance of Cave Hollow Park on the north side of the street. This is the property that Colson Construction has purchased, and they desire to build it out with additional duplexes as well. If the annexation is successful this evening, then council will need to establish a zoning district for that land. The request has been for an R2 district. It is adjacent to R2 where those duplexes are now, and R4 is back to the east, to the north, and then further to the west of this site. So, it is surrounded on three sides by R4. To the south is property located in the county, so there's no zoning on it. Planning Commission considered this request at their meeting last week as well and recommended approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
We have nobody signed up for a public comment. Any questions?
So, the R2 is, refresh my memory on the R2, that built houses, or is that the multi-duplex? R4 is duplex, right?
R2 is 1 &amp; 2 family dwelling districts, so you can build single-family or duplexes in it. R3 is your low-density multifamily. You can build apartment units at the rate of one per, I think, one per 1,200 square feet of lot area. And then, R4 is a more dense version of apartments. You can fit more apartments on the same size lot than you could in the R3. In all of them, you can choose to build an R1, a single-family house, but in R1, you can only build a single-family house.
Thank you.
Any other comment? We'll close this public hearing. Move on to second readings of ordinances. Item number 8. An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 91 Northwest 10 Road and the 800 block of West Gay Street on the north side of West Gay.
This is the same land. Staff has not received any comments during the comment period between the last meeting and this one. Staff would recommend approval of the ordinance.
I've moved said ordinance to be moved to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 91 Northwest 10 Road and the 800 block of West Gay Street on the north side of West Gay Street. This is for adoption or rejection.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Moving on to item 9, first and second reading of ordinances. 9-1. An ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower in a light industrial district located at 1111 South Mitchell Street, Apartment B, in the city of Warrensburg.
This is the hearing that you held just a few moments ago. Staff would recommend approval of the ordinance, which would grant a conditional use permit for a tower not to exceed 150 feet in a light industrial district located at 1111 South Mitchell Street, Apartment B.
I've moved said ordinance to be moved to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for land use 19200 telecommunications tower in a L1 Light Industrial District located at 1111 South Mitchell Street, Apartment B, in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Moving on to item 9-2. This is for first and second reading. An ordinance approving and accepting the third plat of Hawthorne Estates Minor Plat, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 480 Sycamore Court and 484 Sycamore Court.
This is a plat that's brought forward by a couple applicants, Tris and Raphael Maxon, Iona Bruce, and the Brand, Brantons LLC. So, if this property looks familiar, you've recently had a plat where you combined two lots into one lot, and that is what's labeled Lot 21B on this plat. They've also been discussing, and now brought forward this plat, which is moving the internal lot line between what's shown as 20A and what's shown as 21B. So, they're moving it about eight feet to the west. The house on 20A has been constructed, and the wing wall is in, extended into the setback area and across the property line onto the Brand's property. The wing wall is allowed to be in a setback area. That's not a setback violation, but the property owners wanted to correct that, and they had the room, so they're moving that lot line to achieve that and get that wing wall completely on the Maxon's property. So, staff took this to the Planning Commission last week. They recommended approval with one condition, and that has been included on the ordinance. At this point, staff would recommend approval of the ordinance. As presented, the condition is part of the legal language provided on the plat. It won't impact the lots themselves.
Just curious, have they mentioned what they're gonna do on the way? Is that the church land?
No.
No?
No.
No, this is over in North Hill subdivision area.
That's right.
Off Sycamore Court.
Yeah, on Timber Glen, if you go down Timber Glen, there's those houses built back in the cul-de-sac.
I got you now. I was on the wrong side, sorry, I apologize.
That's fine.
I move this said bill to be moved to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting the third replat of Hawthorne Estates Minor Plat, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 480 Sycamore Court and 484 Sycamore Court. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Alright, moving on to first and second readings. Item number 9-3. An ordinance approving and accepting the replat of Lot 4 of Hawthorne Development, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 1205 Basswood Street.
Lot 4 is currently under development with the two buildings that has apartments that have been constructed by Hamilton Corporation. He owns the lot under a different entity's name, which is Stonewall Heights LLC, and as that LLC, he has applied for this replat. This section's off and creates two new lots on the south end of Lot 4, so the apartments would remain on what is labeled on the plat as Lot 4A, and then on the end, he's creating two lot, two new lots, Lot 4B and Lot 4C. Staff has requested several changes to this plat. Many of those were made, which created a few new additional issues in the last review, and so, there are conditions of approval in your ordinance in front of you. Staff would recommend approval of the ordinance with those conditions as well. Those are the conditions that Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with last week. It is property, okay, get back to my staff report. It is located in an R3 district. The intent, I believe, is to build single-family homes. They are large enough lots, you could build duplexes on them. I think the intent is to do single-family homes.
These are the two lots on the south side of that plat?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, they're the two lots on the south, 4B and 4C. They have frontage along Poplar Street.
Okay.
One on the corner has frontage, both on Poplar and Hawthorne Boulevard.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, there are single-family houses on down Poplar Street to the east.
Move said bill to be passed to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
I have to exempt myself from this vote?
You wouldn't?
I have to exempt from the vote, sustain.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving and accepting the replat of Lot 4 of Hawthorne Development, a subdivision in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 1205 Basswood Street. This is for adoption or rejection.
Jacobs?
Sustain.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item, first and second reading, 9-4. An ordinance establishing an R2 1 &amp; 2 family residence district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 91 Northwest 10 Road and the 800 block of West Gay Street on the north side of West Gay Street.
A few minutes ago, you annexed this land into the city and held a hearing to consider zoning at R2. This ordinance would zone at R2 if approved this evening. Staff would recommend approval.
Move said bill to be passed second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing an R2 1 &amp; 2 family residence district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at 91 Northwest 10 Road and the 800 block of West Gay Street on the north side of West Gay Street. This is for adoption or rejection.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item 9-5. An ordinance to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus from Field Fire Equipment.
Mayor and members of council, we've been working on getting replacement SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus, the air tanks where we go into fires. We were, we had bid another company and were unsuccessful in getting a decent bid out of them. It was brought to our attention that we could probably tag on to another department that bought some and, under cooperative purchasing. It turned out to be a very good deal on the, on it, different manufacturer, but as well within the standards that we wanted and originally went after. Number one. Number two, we were able to do this out of funds of the bond issue, and it falls underneath what we could use for it because of the savings on the fire trucks we're paying up front and some value buying of other equipment. We had enough money to buy it out of the bond funds. And so, this is for the total of 33 air packs, 44 masks, 76 bottles, and hydrogen and petrotrits, a bunch of other things that go off with the new technologies, but we've got a really good deal to go with and recommend approval.
What's the other organization we partnered with?
Like those are Fire Protection District.
These have the same, they provide you the same amount of time?
Four thousand hours of working use inside.
Okay.
Atmosphere. They have electronic tracking devices on them that we'll have installed in the computer, the command vehicle that will be able to track people's air consumption and who's getting low and where they're at generally in the building. They also come with a tracking, handheld tracking unit that will be able to go in, and if there's somebody down, we can scan and find that down item. Leave there an eight-year warranty. The closest authorized warranty repair place is in Carney.
Wow. So, we're certainly not sacrificing anything by switching?
No.
Okay, okay. Good.
How many times have we applied for FEMA grants to?
That was three applications for FEMA grants. The last one, we got told that we made the cut, but they ran out of money by the time they got to us.
I just want to make the point for the public that we did try to go after federal grants for this, so we didn't have to use bond money or taxpayer money to do that. Of course, federal money is taxpayer money, but we did make every effort, but it got to a point where we just couldn't wait to replace this equipment anymore. We represent a significant safety hazard to our employees.
Between the safety and spending, it's running about $1,600 a month keeping the other ones together, and having trouble finding parts for them now. The shipping time should be about four and a half weeks.
Okay. We need a motion to approve. So moved.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus from Feld Fire Equipment. This is for adoption or rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Moving on to item 10, Other Business. 10-1, Discussion of Feral Cat Program. Looks like we have Megan Geiger here.
Hello.
Hello.
I have some resources for you guys. I don't have quite enough, but I also have a presentation slideshow also, so I don't know if you guys wanted to hand these out, there's five of them. Thank you. Alright, good evening. My name is Megan Geiger, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about a subject that's not only close to my heart, but an important topic in the advancement of animal welfare. For several years, I have been a volunteer, a foster, and a caretaker, both with nonprofit groups and on my own. I'm a current volunteer with a local group, and I'm also a mid-Missouri resource and volunteer for the worldwide feline advocacy group known as Alley Cat Allies. So, tonight, I'm here for the cats, to give them a voice and to express the desperate need to take further measures so we can continue improving animal welfare in Warrensburg. I may not have lived here very long, but I am for Mid-Missouri, and I know firsthand just how dire the community cat crisis is. Okay. So, in general, in my presentation, I will provide you all the facts in hopes to create an open, honest dialogue and to view the subject from a perspective that showcases how a TNR ordinance or program will benefit everyone, human and feline alike, as well as proposing some solutions and goals for this program. So, in general, what is TNR? TNR basically means trap, neuter, and return. When deciding on new programs and policies, it's important to know and understand their, an animal's behavior for a program to be successful, and TNR does just that. It is the only humane approach to population control for feral cats. It's used in rescue groups throughout the world and is rapidly gaining awareness and community implementation. It directly and immediately prevents new litters from being born outside to suffer in the elements. We're in the midst of kitten season as we speak, and shelters, rescues, and fosters are beyond capacity with kittens under the age of eight weeks. TNR will greatly reduce these numbers and allow more to be saved. And just to clarify, feral cats are just like the cats you may have at home, they're just not socialized to people. The process of TNR includes live trapping stray and feral cats, bringing them to participating veterinarians where they are spayed or neutered, vaccinated for rabies, and left ear tipped for future identification. They're then brought home with a caretaker where they can remain in the, in the trap to safely recover from anesthesia. Once recovered, they're brought back to their original location to be returned to their colony and caretaker. So, why returned? The R is important to the mission. They are bonded to their home and colony, and relocating them will cause them to disappear or even attempt to travel back to their original home. With returning them, the presence, their mere presence will deter other new colonies from moving in and reproducing. Relocating a feral cat colony will only create a vacuum effect, which basically means cats taking, taking cats out will only allow more to move in. Trap and locate and trap and kill simply are inhumane and are not effective in controlling the population. Alley Cat Allies stance is that relocation should only be used as a last resort in case of emergency or unsafe situations. So, how and why does it work? TNR instantly and effectively reduces reproduction rates and diminishes the shelter intake of orphaned neonate kittens who struggle to survive without their mom. The shelter simply does not have the time, money, or resources to care for the extensive needs of these kittens, and with anywhere from three to seven kittens per litter, that's a lot of time and money. We're fortunate to have, to have veterinary offices in the Mid-Mo area that participate in low-cost spay and neuter services, including TNR. Also, adult feral cats are not eligible for foster programs. Socializing them is possible, but it can take weeks, months, or even years, if at all. Socializing ferals is something that can be done and is done by their caretakers over time. The foster program, however, associated with the shelter, will be beneficial to socializing feral kittens. Furthermore, it will help us reunite lost cats with their owners quicker, once scanned for microchips, and that's if they have a microchip. Alright, some of the benefits, the benefits for the cats are what we've already gone over in the last slides, but I wanted to highlight the disease prevention. During TNR, they're vaccinated for rabies, and with the recent case of rabies in Johnson County, this will help prevent the potential spread of the disease here in town. The benefits for residents, first and foremost, include the elimination of hormone-driven behaviors that are complained about the most, which is fighting, spraying, roaming, and yelling at 2:00 AM. So, essentially, they will be better neighbors, and that's, that goes for whether you like cats or not, that's still gonna benefit, you know, the resident. Now, there are even more benefits for the shelter and the city. Fewer litters equals less intake and less money spent. With the intake of feral cats, the potential spread of diseases are escalated because per current protocol, they're not vaccinated until their time of spay or neuter, simply because you can't really, you can't really vaccinate a feral cat unless they're under anesthesia, they're a little bit too, it's just, it won't happen. So, depending on their surgery date, that leaves a window for the potential spread, because with more sick cats, the cost will only increase. A TNR program will free up time, money, and resources to handle emergency situations such as orphaned neonate kittens and injured cats. Not to mention, it will eliminate the risks associated with employees handling a feral cat in a shelter environment. Another huge benefit is that with an approved TNR ordinance, it will allow the shelter to apply for the many TNR-specific grants that are out there state and nationwide. So, the statistical breakdown, in 2017, the shelter handled 428 cats, including both socialized and not socialized feral cats. 250 were adopted, 61 were transferred, 14 were euthanized due to serious illness or injury, and 77, let me see, and 77 died at the shelter. Out of that 77 that died, 58 of them Out of that seventy-seven that died, fifty-eight of them were kittens under the age of six weeks. TNR will greatly reduce this unfortunate number. And so the cost breakdown, with each new cat intake, the shelter spends ten dollars per day, per cat, whether they're feral or socialized. We've discussed that the intake of sick cats can increase the cost, so for one cat, the shelter spends fifty dollars minimum for their required five-day stay. Ultimately, the money saved will allow them to save more cats and will allow the shelter to make improvements and continue their great work. And this is where community support comes in. The viewpoint that many rescue workers and advocates like myself have is that this needs to be approached as a community effort. It is not and should not be one group's responsibility. And quite frankly, feral and stray cats are the direct result of irresponsibility and negligence or just simply being misinformed or uneducated on the topic over a span of many years. We need to harness the power of our community and educate our neighbors because it is vital to the advancement of animal welfare. So some of the solutions and goals that I have for this program would be, we can create a TNR task force, which would be a community-based volunteer program. The ordinance will allow the group as well as fellow rescue groups to provide support and aid in TNR. It will allow us to socialize feral kittens for adoption and whatever other stray cats that we may catch along the way so we can reunite them with their families. We would be able to provide support to residents located inside and outside of city limits. We can plan fundraising events and food drives. The shelter can apply for the millions of dollars in grants available for TNR-approved towns. We can work with university students and military members to raise awareness. The most important thing is we can finally have an open and honest communication and support. So in conclusion, volunteer and rescue workers' valuable experiences and skills will help both the shelter and the city because they can't do it alone, and they shouldn't have to. A TNR ordinance will not only cost, will not cost the shelter or the city any money, it will greatly reduce current costs at the shelter and will bring in potential grant money. We will create an environment for safer, happier, and healthier animals, which will mean happier residents. Once we accept and recognize their presence, only then can we meet them where they are and move forward strategically. We all live here, so we must work together for the betterment of our people and our animals. Thank you. And I'm open to any questions or concerns also.
Who around us currently has a TNR program?
Currently, Sedalia just approved it, I believe, a couple months ago. So they've begun the process of applying for grants, and they're actively trapping, you know, as many as they can and trying to reduce their numbers. As for Kansas City, I believe, I haven't gotten their information, but I'll have to look that up, too.
Was those numbers you presented, were those our shelter numbers?
Yes, those were the shelter here in town. Mm-hmm.
What's the current process for feral cats at the shelter now?
We get a complaint, the animal control officer will go out and set a trap, and when they take the cat into shelter, from there, we describe the condition of somebody's cat who's got a microchip. We hold it for five days, which is our stray hold requirement. After that time, if it's social enough, it'll be spayed or neutered and then put up for adoption. If it's not deemed to be social enough, we'll still alter it, but then we'll keep it for our Barn Buddy Cat Program, which is a program that offers feral cats to people who want barn cats for five dollars.
But there's no spay and neutering that goes on with those cats, or they are?
Everything is.
Just like an adopted pet?
Yes.
It's just a discounted rate because they're not socialized?
Right.
And how would it work differently with the new TNR program in addition to what we currently have in place? So how would that work?
I haven't researched it to know.
Okay. I mean, we could use TNR in addition to the Barn Cat Buddies Program. The only issue that I potentially see with it is relocating is difficult. If the new owner follows like proper protocols with introducing and getting the cat comfortable and so they can bond to that environment, then that's great. That's a great option to have. So TNR, there's just too many cats, you know, out, feral, stray, to be a part of the program. It's not a one-size-fits-all kind of deal. So I think this will help, in addition to the Barn Buddies, to help kind of create and a means to stabilization of their population.
Do we have any data available on the success of the Barn Buddy Cats staying with?
We do not. It's not a very well-utilized program.
Right.
It's there, and we advertise it. We don't have a lot of demand for it. My understanding anecdotally is a lot of farmers end up with cats that few use.
They find it themselves.
They find it on the farm.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah.
The key difference between what we do now and this program is that we don't release them back.
Right.
Yeah.
We're trapping them, we're collecting them, we're neutering them, we're holding them for five days. We're just not doing the final piece of returning them back where they were picked up.
Right.
With the TNR program, would everything have to cycle through the shelter? Or is there a partnership with local veterinarians that individuals could take trapped feral cats to X, Y, Z?
Yes. It wouldn't necessarily be through the shelter, it would be through rescue groups. It would be individuals that have experience in dealing with feral cats and the process of TNR, whether that's individual funding, you know, paying for it themselves, or finding these grants, or even just fundraising on their own, too. And that's really where it comes, it's what it comes down to, is, you know, people who love and care for these cats will take it upon themselves to do what's right by them and to provide the best care they can for them.
Do you, as an advocate, have a feel for the, say, Brookside, the neighborhood that where we probably have the most feral cats? Do you have a feel for how the residents there might?
Um, I'm not.
Do you have any buy-in, I guess I'm asking?
Okay, I'm not familiar with Brookside. I am familiar with a property over by the university, Warrensburg Properties, I believe, and I've spoken with them because their site seems to be a drop-off site for, you know, people bringing their cats. And I've spoken with them, and they're all for TNR because they see and have to deal with the cats in their area, and it's just, it's gotten to be too much. So I think this will really help them help the cats. And I think it's, I think they'll probably go for all, especially apartment complexes because I think they kind of tend to, you know, people move out and just abandon their cats, and then, you know, over the years, they're not socialized, and that's where feral cats come from. So I know for them especially that it's desperate and that they would completely benefit from a TNR program. And the other thing to remember is when returning the cats, they do have a caretaker, someone who provides shelter for them, like in the winter and summer, and they provide food for them, and they look after them, and that's an important thing about returning, too. So.
Any questions for Megan?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to other business, item ten-two, possible appointments to boards and commissions. I believe we have three folks interested in Board of Adjustments, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And how many open seats do we currently have?
Two alternates.
Two alternations open.
That's what we have open at the moment?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the length of the appointments?
They're five-year terms.
Five-year term. And then is it staggered for the folks that are currently serving on the Board of Adjustments?
They are currently staggered, I don't know why.
Okay.
Who's in, I'd have to look.
Right, some of them.
But all five seats are filled currently?
There's five regular that are filled, and they're staggered, and then there's three alternates. We have one, Brian Freeman serves currently, and then two open. And the three alternate staggered, too. I'm not sure what the overall stagger is, though.
Okay, so.
They meet as needed, I think that's one reason why it's.
But the board is currently seated, I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
I think because they don't have a regular meeting date, they meet as needed, which is generally three to four times a year, but then sometimes two years might go by and there's no meeting. The inconsistency then makes it hard when we do get an application in because they don't have a plan, I mean, they don't routinely keep a certain day or night open. And with this last one, we've had a very challenging time to set up a meeting. The other alternate, for instance, can only meet from 5:30 on in the evenings. One of them can't meet on Tuesdays, one of them won't meet at all in June because she's having a green baby. There's a variety of reasons that we don't seem to be able to get five in the room for a meeting until July 18th with our current members.
Five is the quorum, or five is the board?
Five is the full board.
Okay.
A decision of the Board of Adjustment is required to be a concurrent vote of four members.
Okay.
So it's a supermajority, essentially, and so applicants always want five in the room, so they have their best chance possible of being approved.
Mm-hmm. Well, we have, what, three names?
We have three names.
Okay. I would put a motion forward that we would consider Lynn Solomon and Mike Shaw to fill the two alternate vacancies.
Okay.
Lynn was on the board before, correct?
He was on the planning.
Planning and zoning.
I don't believe he served on Board of Adjustment, I recall.
But he is retired.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a vote. Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes. Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to bring forward? Come on up.
Hi, I'm David Ewing. I live at 1024 Walnut Lane. I've got the hotel going up right behind me. So all you've heard me before, but I'll explain a little bit to Mr. Lund, I'll just, I'll take up a few minutes of your time. I'll talk about the history and my concerns, but basically, I need to tell you, I'm heartbroken that the trees have been removed from behind my property. And I'm concerned about the oops or surprises that may come in the future. We, history behind it was that the hotel was going to go in, and they made an application to be put out there. And in the planning and zoning meeting, it was very apparent that the planning and zoning people, for the majority, valued the idea of a neighborhood, valued the idea of a backyard, valued the privacy that provides us with a backyard. And so they were going to basically deny the petition, in which case, the architect said, "Well, let's see if we can't move some sort of compromise here. Let's meet with everybody." And because the city did want the income, and we also wanted the privacy, fifteen of us met with the architect to see what we could do. And I will share this with you, this is the original agreement. Oh, no, sorry. Is that fair? Thank you. Thanks. And we reached pretty much an agreement at that point. Then the council asked us that the four property owners that basically adjoin the particular neighborhood get together with the architect and spell out some details, which we did. And those things were spelled out, and I brought that forward, and by the way, the dates on there may not be accurate, but they're what was listed in my computer when those were done. But on the page two, you'll see that I brought up in writing some clarification of some things that the architect and I, or no, the four property owners, brought up and said, "This is what's also to be agreed with." In fact, we even gave in about the blue spruce. We said the blue spruce is too expensive and didn't grow very fast. But you notice there is the berm. And so we had some sort of agreement between them and the owner and us about what was going to happen. If you look on page three, you'll see that that was the proposal that was made at that time. And please notice that the berm is, the berm underneath the four-story, is ten feet up from the bottom of the first floor of the hotel. And it was to go all the way across, all the way across the property. So, and that berm was a very important key to our negotiation. We wanted parking in front, and that was key. We wanted garbage in front, but just as importantly, we wanted the berm with its trees to protect the neighborhood from lights and sounds from the cars and people coming in, security. And of course, biggest of all was privacy. You'll also notice on that, there's a thirty-foot gap between the property line and the beginning of the berm itself. The owner was okay, the architect was okay with that because, and we were especially, because it would allow the trees, the few trees that were still left there to be there and for privacy because, I mean, it's a four-story hotel, my gosh, to take place up there. And at least five or six months out of the year, we wouldn't have to look at the entire length of the hotel, plus water drainage, the water coming off that berm would have time to be soaked into the ground. We do have a problem with water drainage, and you can ask Slim. We've got our property going this way, right now, the berm's going this way, so we've got a potential of water coming back into our yard, and we will be talking about that, maybe if that particular thing happens. Somewhere along the way, things changed. And I'm not sure why the surprise happened. Because as we came up there, all of a sudden, the trees are being removed, the berm is now right next to the property line. I do know, I talked to Ms. Carroll, and the March meeting of 2017, we approved a plat, and it's there in black and white, that berm is right there, and I'm sorry, for some reason, we missed it. I mean, when I saw that plat, I'm not, I can't read topology very well, but it had arrows going one way and arrows going the other way. And to me, as I look at a map, that means it's a drainage ditch and it's the berm that takes place up there. So that is a concern, it's like an oops. Now, at the meeting, that was March in 2017, for those of you that are here, we argued two things. One, should the fence be in front of the berm or back of the berm? That didn't take very long. But we also argued whether the hotel, they were supposed to lower it two feet, and they didn't. It got passed by the city council, it was okay, to which I said, "Well, two feet's two feet for this big of a hotel, but what else is going to happen? We've got an agreement, what else is going to happen?" I think the city manager made a comment at that time also about when you make an agreement on something, what else is going to happen here? So I'm surprised with this berm. So there's a couple of things I'm concerned about, more oops that may happen. If you look on page four, you'll see that I've got a picture of the drainage ditch and of the berm. And I'm concerned about the water coming down, of course, and I've made that very clear. I'm also concerned about the interpretation of the height of the berm. There should be a picture there where you see a line going across. Now, I'm standing in my property, and I'm taking this picture right at chest level, and if you look at it very carefully, at the top of the berm, that's there. This is on the high part of the property, by the way. This is on the biggest part of the berm that's been left there so far. It's even with the floor of the hotel. Now, we never said ten feet above the ditch, because otherwise, at this point, all they're doing is filling the ditch up five foot, and I can still see the front door of the hotel. That was never the intent. The intent was to go up ten feet from the floor of the hotel and put the trees on top of it, to provide the security and the protection from lights and sounds and particular things. So here we have an oops. You'll see some other pictures there. See the storm drains there? The intent originally was to have the berm to one side, so the storm drains would not have to have these gaps in the berm. And of course, if you look carefully enough, and I'm sorry about the pictures, they were the best I could do, there's going to be a little problem with water going around those berms anyway, to, remember, I'm concerned about water running into my property, I already have problems with water going from the entire Walnut area going down through the back of my property, as stated before. So, anyway, what's there is there. Looking at the berm, saying, "I don't think that was what was meant to be," whether the plans got changed inadvertently. You guys know that I went to every planning meeting, I went to every city council meeting concerning that. I don't remember ever discussing that the berm was going to be changed. If it was, I would have brought it up. Now, to be realistic, my wife and I retired at the time of that March meeting. My son had just gone into the hospital. From October to February, he'd gone in eight times. He, out of the twenty-four weeks there, he was in ICU-16. He went through several operations, which he went through his eighth brain operation. I think that we retired. And we're sorry that somebody, we're disappointed, somebody didn't point out and say, "Hey, did you notice this?" Because we're tired. And the berm is one of the main things to protect the neighborhood from this hotel. I'm also concerned about the oops, and I should tell you about the oops. Robert Spencer is the person that's basically in charge of the project. When we saw the trees being cut down, my wife did, anyway, she went over and said, "Hey, hey, there's not supposed to be trees, we're supposed to have those trees left there." Anyway, she went to the city council, got Slim, and got the, basically got them to stop cutting down trees until they could talk about it nine o'clock the next morning. They said, "Okay, we'll get this straightened out, we'll talk about it nine o'clock the next morning." So I go out at 6:30 the next morning, and guess what? So I go out at six-thirty the next morning, and guess what? There are three trees being cut down. So I'm, I'm leery whether or not anything we say will be upheld. Furthermore, I'm not sure, Ms. Carroll, what the quiet hours are, but if I go out and I tell you that I saw, uh, remember, they're right outside my backyard with heavy equipment, don't you think five-twenty-three is a little early? And last Saturday, they started moving cement at six o'clock. I know for sure they had the cement flowing at six o'clock. So, I, I can't blame, I can't blame them too much, it was hot weather, okay. I'd be doing the same thing. But the thing is, it's one of those things where you don't ask permission, you just do it and, and ask for forgiveness later. So how many more of these are gonna happen? You know, the lighting, the trash, or completing the berm. So my purpose in being here is showing you, and I have to say it, the disappointment that I have when group has met an agreement between us and the owners, and things get changed, whether it be inadvertently or on purpose, that, so, thank you for your time, I appreciate you letting me voice my complaint.
Thank you, thank you, Dad. Do we have, do we have times in which construction people are allowed to be working? Is that?
You, you, we don't have times about construction activities, so if you can be quiet and work, you could work. If you can't be quiet and you violate the noise ordinance, which is seven AM to ten PM, then yes, uh, you could, neighbors can call. That was on a Saturday morning, I would say, call PD, call dispatch, have an officer dispatched to, to ticket that. Uh, if it's during the week, eight to five, our building official can go out, but if we're not available, if it's off hours, and, and I think PD is who they've called in the past. We did call, um, that comment was made on a Facebook post, which Gary got to us, so we did call the contractor today and tell him what those hours are.
Okay. And is this, I mean, I don't think we've made any changes from the last meeting that we had, have we?
Not to the site plan, no. The plans were in the packet at that March meeting.
Right.
And those are the plans that we're holding them to. It does show the gap in the berm that he mentioned, um, and the, and specific elevations for the berm, as well as the floor of the hotel. That is what we're holding them to and what we've told Robert that we're holding them to. I don't know if the berm is done, or if it's, still needs to be added to, I don't, I don't know on that. So, if, if it's not tall enough to the elevations on that plan, I don't know at this point.
And, and all of those items have to be met per contractual agreement to, for us to give them an occupancy permit?
Yes, they would all check at the final. Yeah, I mean, we, like, the floor of the hotel, we have, um, that we've, before they, before we okayed the footing foundation, first inspection on that, they had a surveyor come and set that elevation, so we would know, with reasonable confidence, the floor will end up in the right spot if you follow the plans and you, including where you decided to put it elevation-wise.
But the final grading plan, uh, the topo, that, we, we don't know yet?
Well, we've approved the plan, that was what was in the March meeting.
Correct.
Those were in that, but we have not gone onsite and approved final grading of the site.
Okay.
That I am aware of.
Nor have.
Nor would we at this point, actually.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Uh, because the trees are, have yet to be planted, the ones that were agreed upon?
Right, the trees that were required on the berm.
Right.
Uh, have not been planted, would not be planted till the end.
Right.
And, and that ordinance that you all approved, uh, both ordinances, neither one of them state that existing trees must be kept or preserved. There were no statements to that.
Right, I, I didn't recall any, but.
Were the trees that were cut, were they on, on your property, David? They were on, they were on the site property?
No, that was a verbal agreement, saying that they would leave whatever trees that they had still on property, but it's.
Was it necessary for them to remove those trees to construct the berm? Is that, is that why they pulled them? Were they kind of in that area, or was it ones that didn't need to go?
Well, uh, Slim, we talked to Slim, and trying to get at least four, four feet, he gave us four feet off, thank you, I did bring that up, I'm sorry, he gave us four feet, which is better than nothing. But, the trees would die, the berm being right to the property level, those trees are gonna die anyway, so it was like we had no choice.
Yeah, you put, you put dirt around the basin.
Yeah, total slope was inserted, the basis trees, which they would've died.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's better to get them out now, than they were on the hotel property side.
Okay.
So that was the, the trees that were removed were removed due to the fact that they would die. I know when I drove, I drove past your scene and removing those trees, and I was kind of, I was kind of shocked we were having more trees removed, too.
Yeah, it's, yeah, since he and I have discussed, I mean, hindsight, might've been better off to remove the trees that are not as much involved in the berm, because the trees were a better buffer, but that was not the case.
Okay. Any other appearances to the council not listed on the agenda? All right. Miss Lanius Maddes from the mayor and/or city council? You got anything?
I'm good.
Oh, actually, I do, I'm sorry, I do have one thing.
Okay, we got.
Um, I just, you know, Saturday, Saturday over there at the, um, shelter, they were awarded a fifteen thousand dollar grant from, do you remember what the company's name was?
Bayer Pharmaceutical.
Bayer Pharmaceutical. Were you gonna talk about this? I mean, okay.
I didn't say the city manager's report.
Oh, is it? Okay, yeah. So, um, I went out there Saturday, they actually had the, um, the, the puppies that were rescued puppies, that, um, they, they had six of them. The, the mom couldn't make it, but, you know, good event, Sarah put on a real nice little event there. Wasn't, wasn't real well attended, other than the people who adopted it and we went out there. But, um, definitely, you know, something nice to recognize the shelter for getting a grant like that.
And last Tuesday, uh, I attended the Farm to Table event, as well as several others in here. It was a, a great event, uh, enjoyed it very much, sold-out crowd. I think they limited the, uh, seats this year to seventy-five. Uh, it was a great, great event, I think it'll be better and better next year. Uh, just so that other people can hear this and, and help me remember, uh, next year, I think we would be better served to move that, um, to directly in front of the courthouse.
I agree.
Because we get better, uh, better visibility for the event, uh, but also better photos kind of going all the way down Holden Street, kind of the effect of, of, right in the middle of downtown, as well as the courthouse provides great shade, uh, whenever it's ninety-three degrees outside, uh, in front of that area. And so, please, um, we mentioned this to several other folks, but this group, especially Slim and folks, try and, uh, remember that that's a good spot to, uh, to put that for next year.
So you're asking staff to approve closure of Holden Street next time?
I think that that would be, uh, a viable option. I think just directly in front of the courthouse, still be able to direct traffic around the backside of the courthouse, and continue going south on Holden Street. However, the northbound will have to have a significant detour.
That was the original request, staff asked them to restructure that due to public safety response concerns through Holden Street.
For fire?
Okay, move it to the, could the other, could it be moved over to the other side, where it's over next to the court, the new courthouse? That's where I would've thought they would put it, because that way you don't shut down old Barney's and those places.
Just so you know, too, they were requiring street closure almost all day, and that's what our big issue with.
Oh, yeah, that, that would be not able to.
They started setting up at eight o'clock in the morning.
They needed time setting up.
And so, it wasn't just the business hours. And that was, that was our biggest concern, was shutting down the street all day.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a viable option, but if we could find a way that they could have a staging area or something to have the tables set and, you know, shut it down at, at five o'clock with, with the detour. Um, the only downside would be, fire would have to go, you know, one way or the other to go north.
We had the same issue, but, 'cause it was almost a thirteen-hour closure of, from Colton Street on up to Gay.
We'll take a look at it next year.
Feedback from, as far as.
I, I understand the desire to have it closed, but.
What would be great for the event, but.
You know, typically, there's, there's certain streets within a community that you try to protect and not close very often, and Holden is one of those, and Warrensburg.
I understand that.
Get a big tent and put the tables in the tent.
That would be nice.
Shade.
Yeah, but overall, great event, just some feedback that, uh, some items I saw would be beneficial to it.
Anybody else from the council have any items to address? City manager report?
Uh, just a brief one tonight, uh, just a heads up, uh, we're gonna be getting very thick and heavy into budget next, um, next council meeting, so there'll be a few presentations. We'll have the wage and benefit study presentation, uh, as well as, uh, every entity that we have a contract with that we provide funding to, as far as community entities will be here, also to address their, their asks, uh, for this next fiscal year, and, and a lot of other, um, budget things to talk about with you next time. So, and with the thinking caps on, you're ready for a lot of numbers, and, uh, I'm looking forward to that. Um, the others here is, I wanted to thank, uh, some of our staff, we had a, an employee luncheon today, and, uh, that was well-attended. Uh, thank you to council member London Watts for attending that today, and, uh, those employees that put in time planning and organizing that. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to state that, um, in advance, I will not be able to be here at the July ninth meeting, I have a family obligation, but, uh, tried to have scheduled for another time, it didn't work, and, uh, so I will not be here at the July ninth.
I won't be there either, I'll be in New York.
I haven't looked at the other second Monday yet or not.
Is, uh, is Ray Johnson gonna be on that meeting?
I think maybe he is.
She's on the week before, I know.
It's around the fourth of July, I think maybe she gets that.
When we talked to P&amp;Z, she is gonna meet July ninth at five-thirty immediately before your meeting, because of the holiday on July second. She was not available on the second, but I thought she said she would be here on the night.
We'll know more next time, uh, whether it's a quorum or not.
Matthew?
Um, we released the RFP for, uh, banking on the sixth, so we'll be accepting bids for the, the city banking institution. Uh, we've already received several, we're hoping to get, uh, even better interest rates than we received last, last time. We also, uh, tagged the, uh, WCBB along with that, so, uh, when it comes up, whoever the winning bid will give both, uh, city and WCBB's, uh, account.
Is that an annual? Do we do that annually?
No.
Oh, I just assumed we just did it.
It's a, it's two years with a one-year option, uh, one-year renewal option, that, that's state statute, uh, for, uh, the city of our size.
They did it right before, well, right after, I mean, I got here, so it's been almost three years.
Yeah, it's been three years.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago we did that.
Three years. Uh, it made, uh, sales tax revenue up to forty-four percent.
Wow.
Uh, so, well, that's forty-four percent of last year, so.
Oh.
Last year, we had a bank, but it, but it still is, uh, it still was a high month, uh, one of the highest home records. So, so far, we're doing pretty good.
Nothing additional?
Uh, follow-up, your city manager report, before we weigh in on some information from MoDOT, they, uh, citywide signal approved projects that are approval, we did receive approval for our bidding process, and, uh, we did for that, uh, that project, so, uh, our approval, council intended approval is now.
Good.
In the books, uh, so we're, we're moving forward, we're getting equipment ordered and getting that project on, uh, Metro Road Extension, we, uh, believe they was gonna start last Wednesday, at the time I wrote this, and they have started on Metro Road Phase One, uh, moving dirt out there. As with any project, we, uh, we've already encountered some soil issues, but, uh, staff moved through those. Uh, there were old field drains that were in place that, uh, were considered.
Bean fields.
So it softened the soil in those, those areas. Uh, we also, uh, we bid the downtown face four project, uh, there were three bids on that project, and, um, one of them was, uh, rejected because it was a non-responsive pre-qualified bid, which, uh, in that project, MoDOT requires that the contractors be, uh, MoDOT approved, uh, that particular contractor, contractor had let his, uh, qualification lapse in March and had not renewed it. Uh, the other bid that we got, uh, was just a non-responsive bid, it was not in, correct order, so, uh, so we're down to one bidder on this project, that worked, that bid is barely due, has been sent to MoDOT for approval. Uh, as you remember, this is, uh, our final stipifying project, and so we'll need to move forward with it, uh, it is, uh, some dollars over what we had anticipated for the project, but, uh, staff will move forward to, uh, bring that to council's final approval. And also, by the end of, uh, this.
What do you mean? I thought you were gonna say who won the Jeopardy game.
Oh, dear. One and three. Yeah, oh, no, don't do this.
Just one and three.
One and three, they did a great job, everybody did great.
Kenya?
Nothing additional?
Two? Suzanne? Anything?
The only thing I have to believe I had is the, the date right to record, um, we'll be picking up the, the next truck on the twenty, the week of the twenty-fifth, and it'll be here the night of the ninth meeting, for y'all to see if you'd like to. It'll be stocked and ready to go and go on service on the morning of the tenth.
And that's, and that's of August?
Pardon?
What, what month?
July.
Oh, July, oh, a month.
It moved up.
Moved up a month.
Right, in the area, we found out when we were up there last, or two weeks ago, um, it got moved up, they had two canceled orders, so it will probably be here around the third to fourth week of August, instead of the third to fourth week of, like, September into October, so it'll probably be a solid month early, too.
Two things, number one, next Monday at three PM in this room, we'll be bringing in two new police officers, so we'd like to invite all of you to attend that. It's a very special time for us to have family or friends pin their badge on their uniform for the very first time. Um, they, uh, so we're excited about that. Number two, um, if you saw the armored car in our lower parking lot that, uh, now belongs to us, it's a retired armored car, we got that through the Brink Corporation at no cost to the city, and, uh, our only expense will be, uh, upfitting it to be used as a tactical vehicle. Um, and, uh, I've been in contact with the school district vocational technical, uh, department, and the metal fab and the body shop kids are gonna take it on as their project, so starting late September, they'll be working on it, and hopefully, they said, probably December or January, have it done. And, uh, we ran into a little glitch with the paint, it won't fit the paint booth, but I think we know somebody who might have a big paint booth to help with that, so we're excited about that, it's gonna be really sharp. It'll actually be used for the joint SWAT team, as you know, ours is a Warrensburg and Johnson County sheriffs, it'll serve the whole county, and it'll give us a vehicle that we can take out to static displays that'll equip it and, uh, be personalized. Um, the kids are gonna have a fun time doing it, at least talking with their, their teachers, and even the teachers are a little excited, no, they've never worked on an armored car. And so it's, uh, gonna provide some unique opportunity for the metal fab kids, as well as the body shop kids, and, um, we're just, we're really excited, they're, they're willing to do that with us, and, uh, can't wait to see what they do with it. We've told them it's a blank slate, so they can do whatever they want within whatever our requirements are, so it'll be really, really cool to see what happens from it.
Maybe they'll disguise it as a food truck.
Yeah. We talked about the sign during the tax operations.
You say you, you think you have found a paint booth that's lo, tall enough to get it?
We've been in discussions with somebody over lunch today that might have a bigger paint booth.
Okay.
Can you sit next to him?
Yeah.
So, let's wrap this up, and we're gonna be moving to closed session, so please bear with me as I, uh, read through this. Vote to close. Vote to close part of this meeting pursuant to section six-ten dot zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri relating to: One, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the city in any confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorneys. Two, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate where public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about that employee is discussed or recorded. Twelve documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed, where all, where all proposals are rejected. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
I need to sign.
Maybe we get the big car, I think. Should I slash through her name?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to take these, so she can put them in the bag. Do you want copies for your book?
I think it's.
If you want to transfer.
Yes. I don't know. Sorry, Barb. On the other side, it is now.